So you're coming to insert the five minutes?
Salam alaikum. You have to come out. You have to come out. It's in a room outside, they're waiting for you outside.
If somehow the link gets fixed, I might need to step outside two days. Because I don't just run after us like...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you do your thing, no problem.
If you ask questions...
I know, I did listen.
Yeah? Do people like respond if you ask questions?
Online?
No, here.
Like over here?
Yeah? They took the course? Like they actually?
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, they guys are coming. They do, they do, uh, they're two sisters.
Yeah, the city right here.
Yeah, they're here?
Yeah, the city right here.
No, no, the ones outside. Who's that in the class?
Oh, Mashallah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You'll see them, they're like regulars now. Almost every single side say Mashallah.
That's amazing. Mashallah. People don't travel now, that's how, people don't.
People don't have money too, don't they?
People don't have money? They don't, they don't.
They don't. Or at least they, yeah, give me, spend the other money. You can start wherever you feel like it, just people saw it on there.
Okay.
Salam alaikum, how's it going? Did? Yeah, come. What do we do, sisters on this side?
Or they're just in the back and...
Oh, back and front, okay. So, you, Talal, you can sit here.
Your brothers, guys.
Brothers at the front, sisters in the back. Sister? Hello, sister. Salam. That's my mom. This is Mohammed.
Salam.
She's visiting from Canada for like three days.
I'm with Mohammed, but she depends on him.
How do you know how many people are, um, like on, do?
Online, I have to log into the...
Oh, okay, forget it, okay, I just wanted to know if people are waiting, because it's not nice to keep people waiting.
Yeah, I'm sure they can order. But I mean, I posted the thing on Facebook, I don't know if you saw it on there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Ah, please, sir, up your hand. They need to take, all they picture back here, you know? All they picture back here, you know?
I mean, it's hard for me.
I don't know, maybe a few more, but it's online too. So, there's people streaming it.
Online, so online.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna ask you questions.
Wait, Sal, let's even go over the questions first. Oh, did you, did you do that, these questions, these questions?
I didn't get time to, but I have like rough questions.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna understand about smart.
Smart.
And it's only question.
Really? There's a lot of practice questions? Yeah. What? Either, doesn't matter. Whatever.
You, uh, S4 V197?
43197?
Uh, Galaxy, S4 V197?
Maybe, probably, most likely.
You know your husband?
Uh... No, I don't. Um... I don't know. Sorry, bro.
I think you check from outside, I guess.
Yeah. Can we turn on the light? Is there a light? I got, I got.
Was they coming? They're like three sisters, two, three sisters?
They are with you.
Was they coming with them, sorry?
Shalat. You finish at four, right? Four o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, how do we finish the materials?
Two chap, two chap, okay. I'll praise their due to Allah, and we seek his forgiveness, and we seek his help. We seek refuge from the evil within our own nafs, and from the evil of Shaytaan. I bear witness that whos whoever Allah guides, nobody can leave astray. Whos whoever Allah leaves astray, nobody can guide. And I bear witness that the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ is his final messenger. Okay, so, welcome everyone to the third deception study session. So, we've had, in the past two sessions, Brother Salman and Brother Mohammed have covered chapter one and two. So, we will begin by chapter three and four, and I apologize that we are a little bit later for everybody else who is online. So, so, so yeah, so we will start promptly with chapter number three. For those of you online and so on, I'll be following my own notes first, and then the notes, the official notes from Qabiyat Husna, and then the book after, so in that order as well. So, okay, so chapter number three. Physical description and abilities of Shaytaan. So, many, many people think that Shaytaan is red, he has tail, he has two horns, he's scary looking, and so on and so forth. But, uh, and we asked them, how do you know this? And it's because usually of the Christian and Jewish tradition. So, can Shaytaan be seen? Um, and because he is from the Jin, the ayah, the as-salat is from the ayah in Sut Araf. Ayah number twenty-seven, where Allah (ﷻ) says... Indeed, he sees you and him and his tribe from where you do not see them. So, you do not see them. And, so from this, uh, the scholars, they say that we are unable to see Shaytaan and who he really is, for who he really is. We cannot see him. So, Shaytaan differed to which extent can Shaytaan, uh, the scholars differed to which extent can Shaytaan be seen? And, uh, they, they came up with two different aspects. Uh, the first aspect is seeing Iblis and the Jin in their original form. And the second one is seeing Shaytaan, Iblis and the Jin in different forms, so the form of men, animals, and so on. So, uh, for their original form, the scholars, they said that there's three different opinions. The first opinion is that nobody, not even the prophets, not even the Salihun, nobody can see Shaytaan at all. And the as-salat, the evidence for that is this ayah right over here, where Allah says that he sees you, him and his tribe, from where you do not see them. So, uh, that is the evidence, uh, that this scholar, this group of scholars, they say, that's the first evidence. This, uh, the first opinion. The second opinion is, uh, is that only prophets are able to see, uh, the Jin and the Shayatin, and are Iblis as well. So, this is the second opinion. And the third opinion is that prophets, as well as righteous people, righteous servants of Allah, Salihun, uh, they're also able to see this. And when in class, we discussed that, um, the second opinion, uh, the opinion that, uh, basically only the prophets are able to see Shaytaan and Iblis as well. And the evidence for this is what we'll cover in a few minutes, Insha Allah. So, that's the first thing. That seeing Iblis and Jin in their original form, and the strong evidence again, is, uh, is that the majority of scholars, they say, that it is something that is specific only to the prophets. Uh, the second thing that the scholars spoke about is the Shayatin and Iblis and Jin in different forms, in the form of men, animals, and so on and so forth. So, uh, and yes, this is true, that the Jin may make themselves visible to other people in the form of animal and in the form of other men. And the evidence for this, we will also be covering that today, Insha Allah (ﷻ). Uh, according to the law, they're not supposed to do this. So, usually when they do, it's for a reason which is not good, for a de, uh, for a devious reason, uh, usually. So, and it may be sinful for them when they take on a different form. So, does anybody know from class, from the people who took the class, uh, which two animals are able to see Shayatin? Dogs and donkeys, Mashallah. Yes, Jazakallah Khair. Yes, so, uh, we covered in class, it was mentioned, that, uh, dogs and donkeys are able to see the Shayatin. What kind of dogs? What colored dogs? Black? Well, Mashallah, Mashallah. My mother who didn't take the course, she knows the answer, Mashallah. Alhamdulillah. Okay, so, the Hadith of Jabir in Abu Dawud, the Prophet ﷺ, he said, "When you hear the barking of dogs and the braying of donkeys at night, seek refuge with Allah, for they see that which you do not see." So, does that mean that dogs always barking and donkeys always braying? It's because they see Shaytaan, or is it because of something else? Hands? Yes, go ahead.
Could be other reasons.
Could be other reasons, yeah. Like they could be hungry, and so on and so forth, so... Uh, and the Prophet ﷺ is clarifying in this Hadith, he is saying that the donkeys and, uh, dogs are seeing Shaytaan and the Iblis, uh, the Shayatin, in their original form, in their original form. So, what does Shaytaan look like? So, in class, we did an activity where the Sheikh asked us all to close our eyes and to imagine what we think Iblis himself, the Shaytaan, you know, the, the main Shaytaan, Iblis himself, what he looks like. And many of us, from Hollywood movies and popular culture, uh, many people said that he has horns, he's two-sided, you know? Someone even said that, you know, he's handsome, I don't know where that came from, but, or because he, he can, you know? But anyway, so, there was many, many different things that were said, and many of this is from popular culture and from Christianity and from other religions, which is not necessarily true at all. And the reality is that we do not know what Iblis looks like. Um, but we do know that he is extremely ugly, he's extremely hideous in his original form. How do we know this? The ayah from Sut Safat, Safat. Allah (ﷻ), he says, uh, he talks about the heads of, he talks about, um, uh, he talks about the hellfire, and he talks about one of the punishments in hellfire. One of the punishments in hellfire is that the people of hellfire will be, will be eating the tree of Zakkum, which is, uh, which, uh, which Allah (ﷻ) says, that this is a tree that comes from the bottom of hellfire. The as-salat is from, it's from the bottom or the middle of hellfire. And to describe this tree of Zakkum, Allah (ﷻ) says, "It is like the heads of Shaytaan." It is like the head of Shaytaan, the heads of the devils. So, we know from this, that Allah (ﷻ) uses the, um, the ugliest analogy to describe a very, very horrific and painful punishment. May Allah protect us from this, Amin. Okay, so, so again, so, the Hikmah behind Sheikh Saad was mentioning in class, and we mentioned in class that, uh, uh, that he did a lot of research, and the scholars have said, uh, done a lot of research, but there hasn't been a lot that has been said about how Shaytaan or the Iblis looks. And when I say Iblis, I mean the Shaytaan, because there's a few people here that didn't take the class. So, Iblis means the Shaytaan, not the Shayatin, not everybody else, but the Shaytaan. So, the Hikmah behind this, the scholars say, is because if you were to see what he actually looks like, he's extremely hideous and ugly, and because of this, we would not be able to function properly, we would not be able to sleep at night, we would not be able to do, you know, live our lives normally. Okay, so, uh, okay, so, and from this, uh, the scholars, they say, uh, just a side point here, that, uh, the scholars, they say that what makes Iblis or the Shaytaan so ugly is because of his sins and his disobedience to Allah (ﷻ). And the scholars, they further say, that just because, just like he is very hideous and he's very ugly, the people that are true, that achieve true piety, they achieve closeness to Allah (ﷻ) through their worship, through their Taqwa, obedience of Allah, they, they begin to become more beautiful. And more beautiful, not in the sense that their physical looks become beautiful, it could be that they have more nuur on their face, but more so their character. And the more their, the more they achieve piety and righteousness, the more their character improves, and the more they can recognize piety and righteousness. So, for the man, for the woman, uh, who is pious, they may, they may recognize at a Taqwa, and they might, they might look at sins in society, and they might see them as ugly. They might see them as completely ugly. And we see this, that there's, there are people in our society who look physically very good, but when you look at their character and the way they act, it is hideous. Okay, so, um, okay, so, let's see here. So, the two horns of Shaytaan. So, you know, one of the, one of the most popular depictions of Shaytaan, the Iblis, is that he has, uh, two horns. And this is something again from popular culture, and what many Muslims as well think, that Shaytaan has two horns. And the, and one of the evidences that they quote is from this Hadith in Sahih Muslim, where the Prophet ﷺ, he says, "Do not intend to observe prayer at the time of the rising of the sun, nor at its setting, for it rises between the horns of Shaytaan." "For it rises between the horns of Shaytaan." Uh, he says, uh, "Biqarni Shaytaan." Yeah, so he says, uh... So, "Biqarni Shaytaan," the horns of Shaytaan. And it's commonly translated as "the horns of Shaytaan," but in reality, it could also mean the sides of Shaytaan. And "Biqarni" actually means a generation, meaning the first and the last, and this could mean the sides as well. Like as the Prophet ﷺ, he said, uh, "Khairul Quruni, Karni," meaning the best of generations is my generation. So, "Qarni" means generation, or it could mean the side, because, uh, from the first to the last. So, many scholars, they say that this Hadith is not saying that Shaytaan has two horns, but in fact, it is saying that Shaytaan has two sides, the Iblis has two sides instead. Uh, and this is the opinion of Imam An-nawi as well. And if you look at, um, and you always wanna look at these Ahadith and these Ayat, as the Sheikh, as was mentioned in our class, and you have to look at these Hadith and ask, what is the Prophet ﷺ, what is Allah (ﷻ), what is he trying to tell us? Not that Shaytaan has, uh, two horns or two sides, or he doesn't. Rather, we say that, um, the Prophet ﷺ is teaching us Muslims that we should not pray at the time of sunrise and sunset, because this is the time that many disbelievers, and Shaytaan himself, he prays at this time. So, that is the purpose of the Hadith, it's not for us to say, because Shaytaan will come to us and he'll say, "How is it this is the case that, uh, there's horns and there's this and there's that?" When Allah says in the, in the Ayah in the Quran and so on, Allah says many things, and Shaytaan might come to us and say, "How is this possible that is like this?" But instead, we should always look at what the purpose behind the Ayat and the Ahadith is. You know, there's a famous statement from Imam Malik that Sheikh Yasser Qadi made us memorize, "In light upon light." Um, so all of these things that we see, descriptions, um, these Ahadith, and many are gonna be coming in the future in Ayat. For example, when Allah (ﷻ) says that he risen, he rose over the throne, what does this mean? So, many Muslims might say this. So, a man came and asked Imam Malik, he says, "What does it mean when Allah says that he has risen over the throne?" Imam Malik, he says, and this is, this is a statement that students of knowledge over here should memorize, and this is something that will clarify a lot of what we're gonna be covering, he said, and Sheikh Yasser Qadi made us memorize it, he said, "The fact that, um, the fact that Allah has risen over his throne, and the fact that Shaytaan has two horns, is known." Um, how it happens is not known. So, that's the first aspect, is that it is known, the fact that Allah has risen over his throne, we'll go with that analogy, is known. The fact that how it happens is not known. Believing in it is part of Iman or faith, and questioning in it is a type of Bida or innovation. So, again, there's four components to this, and if you think about many of the Ahadith and Ayat that are very literal in this sense, this is our stance, the Sunni Muslims that we adapt to this. Again, so, uh, okay, so does everyone understand that? Do I need to repeat this? Alhamdulillah, okay. Okay. So, another evidence is that in this Hadith, the Prophet ﷺ, he says, um... He doesn't say "Biqarni al-Shaytaan," he says Shaytaan, meaning, um, just any Shaytaan, not the Shaytaan. So, we cannot say that the two horn, that this Hadith is saying that the Shaytaan has two horns, because the Hadith itself in Arabic says "Biqarni Shaytaan," not "Biqarni al-Shaytaan." So, that's another evidence why this Hadith is not in fact saying that Shaytaan has two horns. Does he have two horns? Um, Allah knows best, Allahhu Aalam, we don't know. Okay, but this is what the majority of scholars has said, have said. Okay, so let's move on to the abilities of Shaytaan. So, um, so again, his ability to see us, um, it's the same evidence that I just quoted, the ayah in Sut Araf, ayah number twenty-seven, uh, where Allah says that he sees you, him and his tribe, from where you do not see them. So, the as-salat again, the, uh, the main, uh, the default is that we do not see Shaytaan, we don't see Jin, we don't see Shayatin. But this means that because he is able to see us, we must be very diligent in, in all of our affairs. We must be very diligent in being obedient to Allah (ﷻ), in worshiping Allah properly, um, because, because he sees us, it's very dangerous in that he can monitor us, he can observe us, he can see how we act, he can, he can, um, he's able to learn from us, and then he's able to, with his whispers, he's able to control us. Um, and again, for us as Muslims, the fact that he can see us does not matter. Instead, it should motivate us to become closer to Allah (ﷻ) with our worship. His ability to take physical form. Am I talking too fast, or it's okay? Okay, Alhamdulillah, okay. So, this, there's two main evidences that we'll cover with his ability to take physical form. So, the first Hadith is the Hadith of Abu Hurairah, uh, who said, may Allah be pleased with him. He said, "The Prophet ﷺ, he put me in charge of guarding the charity of Ramadan." So, uh, someone came to me, uh, someone came to the charity at nighttime and started grabbing from the charity, until Abu Hurair, Abu Hurairah, he caught him, and he said, "I will turn you over to the Prophet ﷺ." And the man said, "No, no, no, I have family, I have kids, please let me go, I will never do this again," so on and so forth. So, Abu Hurairah, he went to, uh, so he said, "I will let you go." The Prophet ﷺ, the next morning, he asked him about this man, and he said, uh, what was the man saying? And Abu, Abu Hurairah, he said, that the man was saying this and this and this, so I let him go. And the Prophet ﷺ, he said, that this man is a liar, and he will come back again. And the same thing happened again at night. The second time this happened again, and he was caught again, and he said again, you know, "I have kids and I have family and this and that, please let me go, please let me go." And so, he let him go again. And the same, the next morning, the Prophet ﷺ, he said the same thing again, that he is a liar, and he will return for a third time. And when he did, and indeed, he did return a third time, this time Abu Hurairah, he said, "I, I will take you to the Prophet ﷺ." And this man, he says, "If you let me go, I will teach you something that if you recite at nighttime, it will protect you, and that no Shaytaan will be able to come to you throughout the night, if you recite this at night before you sleep." And he said, that if you recite Ayatul Qursi, uh, before you sleep at night, no Shaytaan will be able to come close to you, uh, and it will guard you until the morning. And when the Sahabi Abu Hurairah, he went to the Prophet, and he said, he told him what this man said. Uh, the Prophet said, that this man is a Shaytaan, was a Shaytaan, not the Shaytaan, a Shaytaan, and he told you the truth, even though he is usually a liar, and that was a Shaytaan again. So, from this narration, we can take, uh, we, we can take many, many lessons. Um, and in class, we discover, uh, we, we learned that one of the biggest lessons is Ayatul Qursi, it's something we should recite at night before we sleep, because it is a protection from Shaytaan at night, um, throughout the morning. And from this, we learned the evidence that, uh, indeed, Shayta, the Shayatin can take, uh, physical form. Um, okay, the second story, yeah, go ahead.
Or just somebody comment online?
Slow down, okay, Insha Allah, okay. Jazakallah Khair. Okay. So, the second evidence is that, um, is from the Seerah of the Prophet ﷺ, something that was covered, something that was covered on the Friday. And, uh, was this mentioned in the review sessions, the story? In the first class? The old man? Yeah, okay, so, so again, this is the story of, um, when towards the end of the Makkhan phase of the Prophet ﷺ's mission. Uh, just to give you a brief summary, towards the end of the Makkhan phase of the Prophet ﷺ, the Quraysh, they gathered, they gathered in, uh, in their parliament, their Da'ul Nadwa, and they decided that they would, uh, they would kill the Prophet ﷺ. And at this time, there was an old man who was with them, and he said that this is indeed a good plan, and he encouraged this plan, and he was actually physically with them. And later on, uh, we find out that this was a Shayta, this was the Shaytaan, this was Iblis. That is the second evidence for how Shaytaan or Shayatin can take a physical form. Okay. Now, the Shayatin and the Jin can take the form of animals. Who knows what two animals the Shayatin can take the form of most commonly? Raise your hands, 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 please. Go ahead, sister. Go ahead. Yes. It's, it's, yes. Yes, and the evidence of that, Jazakallah Khair, is, uh, the Hadith in Sahih Muslim. Um, the Prophet ﷺ, he said, "When a person is praying, he should place something in front of him. If a black dog walks in front of them, it would break their prayer." And when asked about this, the Prophet ﷺ, he said, that a black dog is a Shaytaan. And this is because the Shayatin, they tend to take the form of black dogs. Does that mean that all black dogs are Shayatin? Yeah, okay, yeah, people are, people are answering, and, uh, it is likely that they could be Shayatin, but no, not all dogs are, are Shayatin, not all black dogs are Shayatin. Okay, so, the second evidence, uh, the second thing was mentioned by the sister, uh, is that they can take the form of snakes. And this is again in Sahih Muslim, where the Prophet ﷺ, he said, that a group of Madinan Jins have converted to Islam, and they are taking the form of snakes. So, if you see a snake in Medina, then warn them three times to leave before you kill them. And, so this is the Hadith. Does this mean, and scholars have commented on this, and they have said, does this mean that all snakes at all times, we must be like this with all snakes at all times? Or is it just, uh, something that was specific to Medina, the time and the place? And the correct opinion, actually, I'm sorry, the majority opinion is that we follow this opinion for all snakes at all times, meaning that if we ever see a snake, within our vicinity, we ask it three times to leave, if it doesn't, we are allowed to kill them. The opinion that was mentioned in class, which our Sheikh prefers, is that this is only specific to the Madinan era, era, so, uh, in time and place to Medina. And just disclaimer, that if you have a snake attacking you, as the Sheikh mentioned, you don't say, "Hey Shay, hey snake, you know, let me tell you three times, you know, please leave me," so on, no. If it's attacking you, you're allowed to kill it, and Allah knows best. So, the third ability of Shaytaan is his ability to flow within mankind. Okay, so, this is the Hadith of, um, of Safiya bin Tihuyai. May Allah be pleased with her. And this is the Hadith, which we talked about in detail. This is the Hadith that in class, we were standing, when we, when the Sheikh made us learn this Hadith. So, I hope that we remember this Hadith, and for those of you who are in class, you know why we were standing and so on, so... Okay, so, the Prophet ﷺ was once making Ittakaaf in the Masjid, and at this time, his wife, Safiya, visited him, and he decided to walk her home at nighttime. And while he was walking her home, three fellow Muslims, three Ansar from the, uh, from Medina, they saw him, and the Prophet ﷺ, he said, "Ya Ansar, this is your mother, Safiya bin Tihuyai." And, uh, he's, and the Ansar said, uh, and the reason he said this is because, actually, we'll come to this. And the Ansar, the three Ansar men said, "Astafrullah, oh Prophet, oh Rasulullah, we would never, we would never say, we would never think anything bad of you, that you're walking with another woman. Uh, we would never think that way, and we would never think anything bad of you." So, and with this, the Prophet ﷺ, he says, that most certainly, the Shaytaan flows in man... And with this, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, that most certainly the Shaytaan flows in man. Most certainly the Shaytaan flows in man as blood flows through the veins. I feared that Shaytaan may throw something into your heart and it is possible. Someone doesn't have a bad intention, but Shaytaan whispers something into their heart. So from this, so again, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was clarifying, he was, he was leaving no doubt. In the hearts of, uh, or no doubt with the Muslim, with the other three Muslims, that indeed the woman there was their mother, the wife of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And from this, many scholars, they say, that if you are in a position to clarify anything, which would cause doubt in your fellow Muslim brother or sister. Then please do so, especially if you're in a leadership position and someone sees you in a position, you know, for example, with your wife. Or someone sees you in a position that they might, uh, get whispers from Shaytaan, which might make them think negatively of you. So you should clarify it. Um, does this mean again, that Shaytaan literally flows through our veins? Or is this metaphorical? Who can answer this question? Hands up. Does this mean that Shaytaan actually literally, he's, he's swimming through our veins, or is this just something that's metaphorical? Um, who can answer this question?
Are you gonna ask why after? Yes or no?
Sure, yes, sure. Okay, so, this question, yes, you're right, uh, actually, we take it literally unless we learn otherwise. Um, because if we start going to metaphorical things, then we might start saying, okay, how does he flow, how does this and so on? Again, as a. The Hadith, again, the, the, the purpose of this Hadith is to show us again, to give us the lesson that Shaytaan, he, he influences us because he flows in our body. Um, and, uh, whether it's metaphorical or literal, I guess the question wasn't asked properly, but. Uh, we take this literally and we don't ask, how is it that, uh, and that's what you were trying to, you mentioned that, how is it he flows? Why does he flow, this and that, so on and so forth? These are whispers from Shaytaan. And again, the purpose of this Hadith, again, is to tell us that Shaytaan is always with us, he is always there to whisper into our hearts. That's the, and so we must always be very, very careful, again, yeah, go ahead.
What's the question, like, so if it comes to the exam, you know, we put literally?
You should put literally and we don't question otherwise because. We'll email Sheikh, we'll email the exam department, because. Exactly, I was just gonna say that, that the fact that Shaytaan flows literally through our veins is understood. Um, and we don't question how it happens. Uh, believing in it is part of Imaan and asking about it is a form of, um, innovation. Or, or more so, you know, delving into it with wrong intention is a form of innovation. So, um, where does Shaytaan reside? Allah knows best. Okay, where does Shaytaan reside? And this is again, um, the Hadith where the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says. When one of you wakes up from their sleep and from performs Wudhu. Let me ask this question actually, where do you guys think, at nighttime when you sleep, if you don't say the proper Athqar, which is Ayatul Qursi and other things? Where do you think Shaytaan resides? In the nose, okay, in the nose, okay. It's in the notes, you, you guys have your notes? Oh, Subhanallah, okay. Okay, so it's in the notes, yes, so. Uh, Shaytaan resides within the nose again when we sleep. So we must, so the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he continues the Hadith and he says, that you must clean your nose. Three times for the Shaytaan spends the night in the interior of the nose. And this is part of our Wudhu, when we clean our nose, three times when we wake up before our prayers. Um, and again, the same rule applies that we just mentioned. That the, the purpose of this is not for us to think, I have an itch in my nose when I wake up, is Shaytaan chilling in there, is he there? No, 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 that's not the purpose, the purpose is that we want to prevent Shaytaan again from being in our nose by, uh, by protecting ourselves with the proper worship of Allah. Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and the proper Athqar and Allah knows best. And this is one of the wisdoms, I should say, okay. Shaytaan's throne. Uh, this is the Hadith of Jabir in Sahih Muslim, where, uh, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says. That the Shaytaan, again, Iblis, who is the Shaytaan. And this whole course again was about, not just about the Shayatin and the Jinn, but it was about Iblis, the, the Shaytaan, the main Shaytaan. Uh, Iblis places his throne upon water, he then sends detachments for creating dissension. Those who are nearer to him in rank are the ones who are most notorious in creating dissension. One of them comes and says, I did such and such, and Iblis, he says, you have done nothing. Then one amongst them says, when, uh, sorry, then one amongst them comes and says, I did not leave so and so. Until I caused dissension or problems between a man and his wife. And Iblis then comes close to him and he says, yes, you have done well. And the scholar Al-Ammash adds, he then embraces him. So, from this, we learn that indeed, uh, the Shaytaan, he has a throne on the water. And, uh, one of the, one of the wisdoms why he has this on the water was mentioned in class. Some of you are reading your notes, but can anyone tell me, uh, go ahead, sister? Exactly. Mashallah, Jazakallah Khair. Yes, so, um, so as Allah says, uh, that he, Allah says in Sut Hood that he has a throne over the water and. Uh, and so Iblis, he wants to imitate Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And because of that, he also, this is one of the scholars, uh, one of the wisdoms why the scholars say, Iblis or Shaytaan again has his throne over the water. Uh, and again, it's not for us to say, where is this throne over the water? Is it in the Pacific Ocean, is it in the Bermuda Triangle? Is it where the Malaysian plane went down? Is that why they can't find him because the Shaytaan has a throne over there? No, again, this is not what we think of this Hadith. Uh, but we derive other lessons from this Hadith again, so. Okay, so, uh, so there was, there was a man, a companion of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, uh, who lived, uh, well, during the time, his name was Ibn Sayyad. And the Prophet was once with his companions Abu Bakr and Omar. And they came across this man and the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he asked him. Do you testify that I am the Prophet, I'm the messenger of Allah, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam? And instead, he said, this man, he said, I testify that I am the messenger of Allah. And the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he said. There's a typo in the notes if you're following, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, he, he instead, he wanted to clarify with this man, he said, no, rather. I believe in, in Allah, the angel, the books and so on, you know, the, the six articles of faith, so. And the Prophet asked him, what do you see, oh Ibn Sayyad? And he answered, I see a throne over the water. And the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, you see, if, you see the throne of Iblis over the water. And he says to his companions who were with him, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, leave this man because Shaytaan, the Iblis has deceived him. And caused him to be confused. And later on, uh, the companions, many of them began to say that this man, Ibn Sayyad, is the Dajjal. But the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam says, no, he's not the Dajjal because, uh, the time for the Dajjal has not come yet. Okay, so. Uh, okay, and so from this, we learn that one of the major, one of the, one of the major lessons that we learned from this Hadith. Is that the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, but for those people that pray regularly, the Musaleen. Shaytaan has lost hope that those people that pray regularly, he will ever be able to deceive them. Shaytaan has lost hope that he will ever be able to deceive those people who regularly pray. Instead, what he tries to do, what the Shayatin try to do is create dissension or fighting amongst, uh, the righteous people. And as was mentioned in class, an example of this is something that we see very commonly in our communities between. The Muslims is that one Masjid is fighting with another, one brother is fighting with another brother, sisters and boards and so on and so forth. So many, many things. Uh, this is something that we have to recognize, this course was amazing in that we recognize a lot of what Shaytaan does. And this is one of the major things that he does, as Inshaallah, we are practicing Muslims. Uh, this is something we have to always, always be careful for, especially with those people who are close to us. Because the general rule we see from the Hadith is that the closer the person is to you. With the best example being a man with his wife, the more Shaytaan will try to cause fighting amongst you, cause dissension amongst you. And as was mentioned in class, that we must be very careful with this, between a mother and a son, between a father and a, a daughter, between a husband and a wife. Shaytaan will always try to come and cause fighting and this is one of the major goals of Shaytaan. And so this is why, one of the major wisdoms, uh, one of the major tools that we can use in our life. Is that as soon as we begin to sense, uh, an evil thought from Shaytaan, then we immediately say. We say the Istiadaa immediately and we ask, and this is usually enough. Uh, sometimes it's enough, as was mentioned in class, for us to be able to, you know, get away from that whisper and for us to prevent a fight between those people that are close to us. And yeah, so again, we never feel that we are safe from the plot of Shaytaan, ever. Okay, so, where do the Shayatin sit and gather? So, the scholars have said that they can inhabit any place on earth. And they can inhabit over here, they can inhabit where we live, but in general, they are not, they are not, uh, they are not supposed to be around mankind. They are usually supposed to be in abandoned places in the corners of the earth where people do not gather. And furthermore, the Shayatin, that are, the, the evil Shayatin, uh, that are up to no good, they're usually gathered in places of physical and spiritual filth. So, physical filth in the sense of literally garbage, places that are not clean in our houses, for example, in bathrooms. This is why we make the Dua when we enter the washroom to protect us from the female and the male Shayatin. Um, and spiritually in the sense that where people, where sins are rampant. So, for example, you might see that the Shayatin are gathered in, in places where, uh, where people, for example, where people, uh. In class, we had mentioned that, for example, clubs, where people, uh, engage in all sorts of immoral and evil things. And one of the things we mentioned in class is that one wisdom, one, one consequence of Shayatin gathering in such places is that you have sin upon sin upon sin upon sin. So you can only think of a few examples, for example, uh, for, if we take the example of a club, for example. Uh, alcohol and music and Zina and so on and so forth. So the Shayatin tend to gather in such places. And as well, the scholars, they say that they gather in marketplaces as well. And there's a Hadith where the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, that, uh. Uh, he says that when it is the beginning of the night, keep your children close to you, because it is when the Shayatin, they spread out. And when an hour of the night has passed, then you may let them out. So close, uh, the doors and mention the name of Allah, so that Shaytaan will not open a door like that. So from this, we learn that indeed, uh, the parents are right when they keep their kids at home at nighttime. And they say you should not leave because Shayatin will, uh, come and get you. Is that true? That's false, yes. Jazakallah Khair, sister, so that's not true. And the Sheikh asked us this question, it was discussed in class as well. What this means is that at the beginning of the night, uh, this is when the Shayatin, they come out. And, uh, this is when we should protect our children, but not at certain other times of the night. The Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is mentioning that this is only the case, uh, towards the beginning of the night. And this also tells us the importance of, uh, making Dua when we enter and leave the homes, because it is, it is a protection from Shaytaan. Uh, when we leave the house and when we enter the house. And we know from the, you know, the Dua that we make, when we enter the house, uh, that this is, if we make that house and if we make that Dua, then we close the door. Then, um, then the Shayatin cannot enter through that door when we enter the house. Uh, okay, so, should we be afraid of Shaytaan? Does he have power? Go ahead.
What's the cool question? Do you know when the night starts? Is that like at the morning?
I don't know. I don't know, we can ask the Sheikh, Inshaallah. Inshaallah, Allah knows. Okay, Inshaallah. Jazakallah Khair. Okay. So, does Shaytaan have power over us? Should we, should we be afraid of Shaytaan? And the answer to this is obviously a resounding, a powerful, no, we are never afraid of Shaytaan as Muslims. Because as practicing Muslims, Shaytaan will never be able to touch us, harm us, and he will never be able to touch our family. As long as we are following the commands of Allah, we are in obedience to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala at all times. So Allah says, um. إنه ليس له سلطان على الذين آمنوا وعلى ربهم يتواكلون Indeed, there is, there is for him no authority over those who have believed and, and rely upon their Lord. Um, and so on and so forth, uh, the Ayat are in your notes, if you're following. So again, he has no power over people that are pious. He has no power over people that are pious. So, and again, uh, so the notes mention this, that, you know, one of the reasons many of the scholars that perform Rukiyas. Uh, and if, if a person becomes afflicted with, uh, for, if they get possessed and so on. The first question that the scholars will ask the man or the woman is, do you offer your prayers five times a day regularly? And if that's the, if that's, and that's usually, uh, what it is, because if you don't offer your prayers regularly. This is you are yourself opening the door for Shaytaan to enter you and to possess you. And may Allah protect us from all of this, Amin. Um. And then, uh, and then there's more Ayat, uh, in the, in the Quran, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says. الذين آمنوا يقاتلون في سبيل الله والذين كفروا يقاتلون في سبيل سبيل، سبيل الطاغوت فقاتلو أولياء الشيطان إن كيذ الشيطاني كانوا ضعيفا Those who believe, they struggle in the cause of Allah, those who disbelieve, they fight in the cause of Al-Taghout. And we mentioned in the previous sessions that this is a name for Shaytaan. So fight against the allies of Shaytaan. Indeed, the plot of Shaytaan has been, is ever weak. Uh, is, uh, is ever weak. So again, so we, we fight Shaytaan with our obedience to Allah, with our piety, with our practice, through our worship of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Okay. Uh. Okay, so, and yes, so Shaytaan himself, he admits in Sutul Hijr, he says to, he says that, he swears by Allah and he says. I swear by the error that you have put me in, that I will beautify for them their good deeds. I will mislead all of them except for those of your servants who are pure in their intentions, those I cannot mess with. So for those people that are Mughlis, that are always, that are sincere in their Ibadah and, and worshiping of Allah. Shaytaan will never be able to mess with them. Uh, but Muhammad, do we usually take breaks or? We do, okay, Inshaallah, we'll take a quick five-minute break because people are falling asleep. Uh, maybe we need to ask more questions, but Inshaallah, we'll take a quick five-minute break. And we will be back at about three oh eight or three oh nine, Inshaallah. Bro, which, which charger do you have? Is it HP? It's my laptop is dying, I didn't realize that this, the power would, you know. Sorry? Oh man, Jazakallah Khair.
Yeah, nobody's getting access to the website.
Really? Like the live stream? Really? Did Sister Samira reply? You haven't from nine o'clock, they usually, they're usually pretty good. Just defer it, tomorrow you can send your request. No, no, they won't, they won't. They won't, especially for us, because we're computer testing, so. Is it usually recorded, like this? Is it usually recorded? Genie. Need a year. Oh. I'm going to, uh. I'm going to practice in the session again. June. The same weekend that they have a class?
June sixth.
June sixth?
Sixth day.
Sixth day?
Okay.
Then I'm going to the Sahaba course. In, I mean, twenty-second August. Seattle also has their Seattle, uh, Sahabi course. I'll recommend go to Seattle if you wanna go.
What?
Twenty-first. They, they announced their course in class and they didn't, they didn't put it on the website, they sold forty spots already. I was up like twelve hours ago. Yeah. September first, or the weekend after August, August twenty-second. Bro, I, I'm going too slow now. We're gonna have to start cutting off these.
No water?
I'm okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, August, yeah, 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 absolutely. Because they've sold forty spots already, so. Just September first? September, what, August twenty-second, after the weekend of August.
Then I should be fair about time. Have to fly the weekend right after.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, the Sahaba course was, uh, supposed to be here instead of the Sacha.
You don't know?
Yeah, yeah. Seattle's cheap, actually, Seattle has the cheapest. They have, they have remastered flights, you can fly back on Sunday night if you have work on Monday.
Do you know what it, what?
It's SEA, SE, Seattle's a home. SE. Yeah.
Are you sure? Are you sure about that?
Yeah, yeah. It's the weekend right after. Don't book the flight, let me be sure. I'm sure, because they sold forty spots, I'll be back.
I did. I did last time. Really? Yes, actually, because there was one email.
Which is bounced back?
Which, uh, came back, uh. No, no, I, I sent this everybody. Oh, you did get it? Guess you're not, that's a good.
He's outside. Washington? Actually, yeah, oh yes.
It's time, time for Seattle as well. It's, it's a holiday weekend?
Yeah.
Usually classes go by night.
Oh, that's what it is, yeah. No, no, it, it is, because they said the, the weekend right after. It is, that's what they said, Sheikh Al Hakim Quick is flying the next weekend to Seattle. After Washington. Anyways, we can talk. Okay. Okay, alright, so we were talking about, uh. Okay, so we were talking about how the only thing that uh gives Shaitan power over us is our sins. So it is only, he only succeeds over us if we allow him to succeed over us. By not obeying Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala properly and not worshiping him properly as we should, so. Okay, so, the uh, the evidence for this is again, uh the ayah which uh. In Sutul Hijr, which was mentioned before, I believe in previous study sessions. Uh indeed, my servants, no authority you will ha- will you have over them except those who follow you of the deviators. Uh this is Allah telling Shaitan that, that he will not have any power, any authority over, over the servants. Except those who follow you of the deviators, follow Shaitan of the deviators. The hadith in Tirmidi, uh the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says that Allah is indeed, I'm paraphrasing, I'm not reading it uh fully. But Allah, uh the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says that indeed Allah is with the judge as long as he is fair. And when the judge becomes unjust and unfair, then Allah will leave him and Shaitan will begin to accompany him. So as we commit more and more sins, we become more and more of a follower and we, we become more prone to the influence of Shaitan. So, uh, so again, so the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is telling us that not just if we're a judge. But whatever profession we have, if we're a doctor, if we're an engineer, if we work at the Masjid, if we, even our relationships. If we're not just, if we're not fair with uh, uh with our relationships and our tasks and positions assigned to us. And if we don't worship Allah, then Shaitan, we're putting, we're giving uh Shaitan more and more power to influence us. So we protect ourselves against Iblis through our piety and our worship of Allah. Can Shaitan become afraid of you? And we know this because with Sahabi, uh Shaitan was afraid of. Jazak, Jazakallah Khair. Okay, so, yes, so in the hadith, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says. That most certainly the Shaitan is afraid of you, Ya Umar. And the hadith that's gonna be mentioned in page sixty five at the end of Abdullah Ibn Buraida was covered in Fikh of Chilling. And it was covered in Deception. If you're looking for exam questions, this may be it. Because he mentioned it twice and we've taken the course twice as well, so.
Where's the question again?
Uh, where's the question?
What would be the question?
What would be the question? Uh, I don't know. Just keep, just read the hadith and uh. Maybe Sheikh Saad will come up with a creative way to ask us this question. I don't think he's gonna ask us who narrated the hadith or anything like that, but. He might say something, he might, he might say something, I don't know, but uh, but just look for this hadith, so, yeah. Insha Allah. Uh, if I, if I see something, I'll tell you, Insha Allah, in the future. Okay. Okay, and, and again, this is also an evidence for why the majority opinion that the prophets are the ones that can see the, the. The majority opinion that the prophets are the ones that can see the shi'atine is correct. Because the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is saying, indeed, I see the Shaitan and he runs away from you. So the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he said, himself is saying that he sees the Shaitan. So the correct opinion is that indeed, uh, the prophets are the ones that can see the shi'atine and Allah knows best. Uh, so now do we blame Shaitan for our sins? Do we blame Shaitan for uh, for anything? For not praying, for not fasting, for not worshiping Allah properly? The correct answer is no. Uh, and again, we have nothing to fear when it comes to Iblis and Shaitan as long as we are protecting ourselves. Uh for, with piety and obedience to Allah. I love this hadith of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. He tells us how to behave with Shaitan, how to be with Shaitan. The Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, do not revile or badmouth or curse Shaitan. Because uh rather what you should do is seek refuge in Sh- in Allah from his evil. Uh so, spend your time protecting yourself from the plots of Shaitan. Uh, a funny story that was mentioned, Insha Allah, it's not personal, so I can mention it. Uh, the Sheikh was saying how uh, uh one, when uh, one brother, he went for Hajj. And you know, uh the jamarat where, where you have to stone, uh the devil or the Shaitan. Uh, a man got, a brother got so angry that he started, he started throwing and he started blaming Shaitan. You caused me to do this, you caused me to do this, you caused me to do that. So much so that he was with his mother who was in a wheelchair, he asked the mother to get up and he threw the wheelchair at the, at the Shaitan. Says, you caused me to do this too, so. So we don't, this is not how we behave, rather with our piety and with our worship. We seek refuge in Allah from his evil and he will not, Insha Allah, be able to touch us. So, and as the, the, the famous, uh, what we covered on, in Sutul Rahim on Friday. Uh where, where uh Shaitan will say, Maqyan Ali Alaiquumin Sultan. Uh, that he, I had no power over you, you know? Uh except for what? I, I made, I whispered to you, I made da'wa to you and then Faastajab tum li, you, you are the one who answered me then. So again, so Shaitan has no power over us, okay? So, the difference between the whisperings of Shaitan and our own nafz, there are three types of nafz uh that we know, or our own. Uh, so the first nafz is uh, is the soul which encourages evil, which is, um. Nafso, nafso, naf- nafsal ammarabissu. And this is the nafz uh within us that encourages evil. And the evidence for this is when the wife uh of Waziz, when she tried to commit zina with Yusuf. And then many, many years later, when she was asked about this and she finally came clean and she said that I don't, I don't, uh. I don't not take the blame, meaning I do blame myself, but indeed, the nafsal ammarabissu, which is the soul which encourages evil. Uh, is the one that is persistent with me, so. Uh, okay, so this is the type of nafz that encourages us to give in to our desires. So this nafz tells us, whispers to ourselves. So, uh this nafz whispers to ourselves, you know, go ahead, uh drink, eat, be merry, uh do whatever you want. Uh, you know, waste your time as much as you want to, engage in this, engage in this act of disobedience, engage in this haram, it doesn't matter. You know, you only have one life to live, look at everybody else around you, they're committing this, they're doing this, they're doing that, why don't you? So on and so forth. So this is the nafz within us that encourages us to commit evil deeds. This is nafsal ammarabissu. And, um, okay, and then, uh, so and then the second type of nafz is the self-reproaching soul, which is. Nafsal lawama, which is nafsal lawama. And uh the evidence for this is Sutul Qiyamah and you can read the ayah over there. Uh, wala aqsimu binafsi, binafsin, binafsi lawama. Uh, yeah, so the evidence for that is right over there. So this is a part of our soul, a part of our nafz, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say soul, a part of our nafz. Soul is a bad translation. Uh, this is a part of our nafz which feels bad about committing sins. So whenever we commit sin and we feel very, very bad about this, this is our nafz, nafsal lawama, the self-reproaching soul. Which uh, which reminds us, uh which feels bad about it. So the scholars, they say that, the scholars, they say that. Uh usually this, this, this nafz, it comes in, it comes uh, yeah, it becomes active, I should say, is uh before or after the sin. It's usually not during the sin. So before the sin, it will say, don't commit the sin. And after the sin, it will cause you to commit tawba or repent to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And there are two types of guilt that were mentioned in class, um also mentioned in Fikh of Chilling. So this could also be an exam question. There are two types of guilt. One is positive guilt when you feel bad for committing a sin. And you say, I feel really bad about this and uh. And you, and you, this leads you to commit tawba and to commit righteous actions which will erase your bad deeds. And uh, so that, that makes you a better Muslim. Uh, then you have negative kind of guilt, which is, uh, there is a typo in the notes. It's uh from nafsal ammarabissu, it's not nafsal lawama bisu, it's nafsal ammarabissu. So, so this is when you feel so bad about the sin that you say, I have no hope. Shaitan has gotten, gotten the better of you and you say, Allah will never forgive me, I have lived a life of disobedience, I've lived a life of not. Doing this, I've lived a life of this, you know, so on and so forth, I will not be forgiven and because of that, you continue sinning. And you don't uh turn back to Allah like you should. And this is only from Shaitan and this is something that is negative guilt. This is something that is a negative guilt. And then the last one is a satisfied soul, nafsal mutma inna. As Allah says in Sutul Fajr, in a beautiful passage which you can read on your own. Uh, but this is the highest level of the self, which is pleased with Allah as the Lord, which is pleased with Allah as our Rab. Um, and this is the type of soul that will lead one to paradise and the evidence of this is directly in Sutul Fajr. So, um, so yeah, so this is the uh, this is, this is the soul that is pleased with Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. As a Rab and which always strives to please Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala at all times. You know, as uh, as Ibn Qayyum Al-Jozee, he said, that uh, you know, the nafz that is busy with Allah. Will even be away from, will not be distracted by even yourself, will not even be distracted by oneself. Because it's so busy obeying Allah, trying to follow Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's commandments and so on, that it will not even focus on its own self. And, um, so on, so. Yeah, go ahead. Yes, okay, so the first, yes, the first type of soul, uh, is a nafsal ammarabissu. This is the first one, naf- nafsal ammarabissu. I'm trying to find my notes here. Yeah, the self-reproach, I'm sorry, the soul that commands you to evil is nas- nafsal ammarabissu. Uh, that's the first type of nafz. Uh, the second type of nafz is nafsal lawama, nafsal lawama. Uh, and the third type of soul is not, is nafsal mutma inna. There's a typo on page number sixty eight, under positive and uh, uh under negative and bad guilt. The type of nafz where it says this type of guilt falls in this category of al-nafsal ammarabissu, not lawama. Al-nafsal ammarabissu, okay? Yeah, the first type of guilt, the positive guilt is nafsal lawama, the second, the negative guilt is nafsal ammarabissu. Okay? Okay, so. Okay, so let's move forward, um. As Allah says in the Quran, that uh those, in the beautiful ayat in Sutul Raad, um. Um, ala bi thikrillahi ta'tma'inna alqulub, that indeed by the remembrance of Allah, do hearts find rest. And this is, uh, itminan, Allah uses the word, qu'tma'in, which is from, uh, nafsal mutma inna. So that's one of the evidences and there's many other evidences that, that are written right over there. Okay, so al-waswas are whisperings, so. Uh, waswas is literally a beautiful or faint sound that can be heard either by the ears or by the heart. So al-waswas is a faint sound that is usually beautiful or beautified, which is heard by, either physically by the ears or by the heart. Um, okay, so there are three different types of sources of al-was- al-waswas. And I should say that the, the waswas that's heard by the ears, uh is by uh the shi'atine from the men. The, you know, people around you that encourages you, encourage you to do evil and from the heart, by the different, different various forms of shi'atine. You know, Iblis, uh Shaitan, uh the shi'atine, you know, and so on, your, your qari' and so on, so. Whisperings come from three sources, the self that commands to evil. So, this is the self which encourages evil and uh, this is nafsal ammarabissu. So this is the self that commands you to evil and uh, Allah says, we have created, we have already created man. And know that which his soul whispers to him, we are closer to him than his jugular vein. Okay, so the, okay, then the second type is the Shaitan or the shi'atine from amongst the jinn. The first type is from one's own nafz, which encourages you to evil. The second type is the Shaitan or the shi'atine from amongst the jinn. As uh, and this is from the beginning of the story, of the uh, of the equation of, or of the, of how Iblis became who he was. Where he whispered to Adam and he said, that you, do you want to um, take from this tree or eat from this tree of eternity and. Uh eternal possession that will, you know, so on, that will not deteriorate, so on. So, that's the second type of shit, uh whisperings. The third one is the shi'atine from mankind. And the evidence of this is from Surat An-Nas. And in this, actually, there's both evidences because Allah ends this surah by saying. So, from amongst the jinn and the mankind that whispers in the breasts of mankind. Okay, so, so those are the three types of whisperings. Uh, those are the three types of whisperings. So, let's see, how can you tell the difference of waswas, a whispering from one's own self versus waswas or whispering from the Shaitan? Anybody? Go ahead.
Uh, from something that you do a lot, from you, that if something like, oh, like comes everyone's.
Right, Mashallah, Jazakallah Khair. So yes, so if it's something that's uh, something that becomes habitual. Or a, a sin that becomes habitual, or if it's something that uh is at the level of, it's, it's, it's within the norms of a base desire. It's within the norms of a base desire, that's from your own soul. If it's something that's really, really weird and something that's abnormal, something that's not from one's base desire, that's from. Uh, a Shaitan, or if it's something that, as he said, that if it's something that's new, that can also be from the Shaitan. Um, and the, the notes mentioned an example which, uh, you can read for yourselves, Insha Allah. But again, so, but I'm not going over it because it doesn't really matter, as, as was mentioned in class. It doesn't matter where the waswas is coming from, what's more important is that we must fight it. And if we say the istiada, A'udhu Billahi Minash Shaitanar Rajin. Insha Allah, if it's, if it's a whispering from a jinn, the jinn will go away. If it's a whispering from another, from a man or a woman, then Insha Allah, this is a reminder for ourselves to turn back and to not follow that waswas. So, okay, so, uh, let's see here. So now, the, now we mentioned in class that there's a type of waswa- uh, a type of waswasa which becomes so strong. That uh, it's hard to ignore it and it becomes very, very strong and uh, we were mentioning in class how some people. Will make wudu over and over and over again. They will say, I don't have wudu, I, I think I forgot about this and so on, Shaitan will come to them. Uh, and say, and so on. So, the scholars, they say that for someone who, who struggles from a lot of waswasa. Or from a lot of whisperings of Shaitan and from their own self, you, you should try your best to convince yourself. That this is only a whispering from Shaitan and do not follow it. And we were mentioned in class as well, that there's many psychological benefits, uh, you know, clinical psych- psychology. Uh, methods that we can also utilize, uh, for this. So, now here's something interesting that we went over in class. Uh, there's a hadith and there's an ayah. The hadith says that Allah has forgiven my Ummah, those whisperings to themselves as long as they do not act upon it or speak regarding it. So Allah has forgiven from my Ummah, the whisperings to themselves as long as they do not speak or, or, or act upon it. So, so do you understand the hadith? Does everybody understand the hadith? Okay, so, so many of us, uh, we don't act on things, we don't say things, but. Inside of us, we feel certain things. We feel like, okay, why is this happening or, for example, um. Uh, you know, if somebody is speaking, we might say, you know, this is wrong, I don't agree with this. Or for example, uh. Someone might, for somebody who, uh, for example, if somebody's a new Muslim, for example, they might say, you know, I don't, from the inside, they might say. You know what? Most of society, they don't have beard, so I don't believe I should have a beard either, for a new Muslim, a brother. Maybe it's a bad example, but it's an example. So, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is saying that as long as you do not act upon this whisper within you. And if you don't speak about it, then it's okay, you will not be held accountable for it, as long as you don't act or speak about it. But then in the ayah in Sutul Baqarah, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, um. So to Allah belongs whatever is in the heavens and in the earth. Whether you show what is within yourselves or whether you conceal it, Allah will bring you to account for it. Allah will bring you to account for it. So you see what Allah is saying over here, that even if it's within you. Or if you, uh, whether you show what is within yourselves, or if you try to conceal it, so. Uh, Allah will still bring you to account for it. So Allah is saying that there's something within you and you try to conceal it, Allah will still bring, bring you to account for it. And because we have less time, I'll just clarify that the ayah is talking about the hypocrites. Which they used to say that we believe in Allah, we follow the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. When they used to go home, they used to say that this, this man is such and such and such. We don't follow Islam, we don't do this and so on. This ayah is talking about an action after you have committed it. Allah is saying that after you have committed something, if you try to hide it, Allah will still hold you to account for it. The hadith is talking about an action before it's done, before you commit it. So if you have not committed the action, if you have not spoken about it, Allah will not hold you to accountable for, account for it. But if you have committed the action. And if you're trying to hide it, Allah will still hold you to account for it. Is that clear? Okay, Jazakallah. Okay, so. Minus repentance, minus repentance. Uh, actually, some, uh, this was also mentioned in class. Uh, that, you know, even if you do repent from it, Allah will only bring you to account for it to show you that he forgave you for it, you know. So Allah still might uh, bring you to account just to show you, to convince you of his ultimate mercy. So, yeah, Allah knows best. Okay, so Shaytaan's army, chapter number four. Okay, so again, so we are at constant war with Shaytaan. And he indeed has an army. You know, uh, one of the main things on, on Friday was mentioned by Sheikh Saad. Uh, was mentioned in class, we discussed that uh, indeed Shaytaan exists. Many people will say that he doesn't exist, he has no influence over me. And for that person, we say that you have really been influenced by Shaytaan and uh, and this is not true. As uh, as some of those contemporary scholars, they say that one of Shaytaan's greatest achievements is that he has convinced people that he does not exist. If he does not exist, we don't learn about him. If he does not exist, we don't try to fight him. Instead, we blame. Different movements, different countries, different religions, different everything, but we never blame Shaytaan. Who Allah always has set us, reminded us in the ayat, that indeed he is the one who is your enemy, so take him as your enemy. Um, okay, so, so indeed Allah has an army and indeed he has supporters. And the evidence for this is in Sutul Shura, which you can read for yourself. Allah is speaking about the hellfire here and he divides. People into believers that will inherit Jannah or that will go to Jannah and disbelievers. That have taken Shaytaan as their Aulia, as their helpers, as their guides. And Allah asks, you know, where are. So Allah says, I'm sorry, so they will be overturned into hellfire, these people that have taken Shaytaan as their. Guides and they and their deviators and the soldiers of Iblis, all of them together. Uh. Yes, okay, so Iblis is the leader, the Shaytaan is the leader of his army. And the evidence for this is the hadith of Jabir. Where, uh, which we just mentioned, the hadith of the, the throne of Iblis over the water. Where basically, uh, paraphrasing again, Iblis has his throne over the water and many shi'atin, they come to him. And they tell him that they have done such and such and such and such. And when the Iblis, uh, when the, I'm sorry, when the Shaytaan. That has created dissension, has created fighting, conflict amongst the husband and wife, comes to the Shaytaan. He comes and he gets up and he embraces him and he says, naam anta, meaning you, you, yes, you, you have done well. So. So this shows us that indeed Iblis has an army and he is presented by many shi'atin on his throne, uh, constantly. Shaytaan's army is made up of uh, soldiers from the jinn and soldiers from mankind. So progeny of Shaytaan, number one. Let's talk about Shaytaan's soldiers from the jinn. And there are three categories of Shaytaan soldiers from the jinn that were mentioned in class. The progeny of Shaytaan, the shi'atin from amongst the jinn and the Qareen. These were mentioned in class, so. Uh, so the first one is the progeny of Shaytaan, the evidence for this, I'm sure this was covered in previous study sessions in Sutul Kahf. Where Allah says. So Allah says, um, will you take him and his descendants, his, his Duri. Uh, as allies other than me while they are enemies to you. So Allah says that Shaytaan and his, his descendants, um, his, are indeed. Allies. His children are indeed allies to each other, I'm sorry, and they are enemies to us. So Shaytaan indeed does have children. Uh, again, we don't know the details of the kids, who they are, Hami they are, who was the wife, what did they look like, so on. It's not important to us. Again, because. Anyway, so Muhammad knows what I'm talking about, so, but it's not important, uh. Because again, the purpose of this is so we can protect ourselves, not so we can go delve into matters that do not concern us. The shi'atin from amongst the jinn is a second category, so uh, the jinn who obey, they follow. They worship, um, they, they obey and they follow, they support Shaytaan and they call to the Dawah of Shaytaan are the shi'atin from amongst the jinn. And the evidence for this is in Sutul Jinn, where uh, where the jinn themselves, they say. Uh, among us are the righteous and among us are others, not so. We were of divided ways, meaning they're. Amongst us, they are the righteous and they are amongst us that are the shi'atin from the jinn. Um, and then the same surah continues. Among us are the Muslims who have submitted to Allah, among us are the unjust. And whomever Allah, who has become Muslim has indeed sought the right course. So from this, we learn amongst the shi'atin. They are Muslims and amongst the shi'atin, they are, um, amongst the jinn, they are Muslims and amongst the jinn, they are shi'atin as well. If you're following the notes, I have asked Sheikh Saad about this. He did not cover the third category of ifrit in class. So let's go to number four and I'll, we'll get back to you in our future study sessions on how we're gonna uh. Talk about this, the ifrit basically, but he did not mention this in class, so we are not mentioning this right now. So. The, the third category in mentioned in class was the Qareen. So. So the Qareen is gonna be very similar to Iblis. Uh, so who are the Qareen? Can anybody tell me who is a Qareen? Somebody who maybe hasn't taken the class. Mashallah. Okay, so yes, so each and every single one of us has been assigned a jinn uh, with us. Each and every one of us has a jinn who has been with us since the day we were born until we die. And this is from the hadith of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And on the day of judgment, uh, this Qareen will come and tell us exactly what Iblis will say. That I did not make him transgress, but he himself was the one in extreme error. This Qareen is very, very dangerous because he is with us since we are born. He's know, he knows us very, very well, better than many of us know ourselves. And he knows what our weaknesses are. He knows how to manipulate us. He knows how to make waswasa to us or whisper to us. So it is very, very important that we must know about this Qareen. And again, not that we are scared of him, but so we are motivated. In our acts of obedience and to worship Allah and to gain in piety. Um, so. So again, so the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says that every child of Adam is a Qareen. Every child of Adam has a Qareen from the angels and a Qareen from the jinn. So Qareen just means your close companion. And, but there's a Qareen from the jinn and there's a Qareen from the angels as well. So the hadith that we covered in class. Um, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says. So, uh, anyway, so basically the Arabic, uh, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says that indeed, uh, that, uh, the Qareen, that. Uh, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says that uh, indeed everyone has a Qareen and they asked you as well. And he says. And he says basically, uh, an me as well. However, Allah has helped me against him and so I'm safe for him. And he does not command me except with good. So the Arabic fa aslama. Over here is a key word because fa aslama means that he has converted to Islam and so he is safe from him. And fa aslamu, it means that, um, uh, means that he does not whisper to the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So I'm sorry, uh, just to clarify again, fa aslama means that he has embraced Islam. The Qareen of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has embraced Islam. Fa aslamu, it means that the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is safe from him. Okay. Alrighty. Okay, so, let's see here. And then the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, when, when any of you praise, you should not allow anyone to pass before you. Uh, if they refuse, then you should forcibly stop them, uh, for with them is their Qareen. So the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is saying that. At any time, if you are praying and if somebody tries to walk in front of you in two speci, two specific situations, which are, if you are the. Imam, and secondly, if you are. Praying alone, Mashallah, Jazakallah Khair. So, yes, so if you are the Imam or if you are praying alone and if somebody tries to come. Uh, who tries to come in between the area of you and where you make sajda, or actually between the area of you and your Sutra, which is basically. Our, an area right in front of you. Uh, if someone comes over there, then you can raise up your hand and you can try to. Uh, uh, ask or prevent that person and you can fight that person from uh, passing through. And if the person insists. Insists in passing through you, then the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he says, it could be that this person is being influenced by his Qareen from the jinn. He's being negatively influenced by the Qareen. And, you know, it was mentioned in class that this is, it's a beautiful wisdom, because you know in Salaah. We're not allowed to move, we're not allowed to chew, we're not allowed to, and many of our, our movements become, are not allowed. Uh, many, many of our movements, if you think about it, are not allowed at all. But Allah has allowed us to, to fight, uh, by raising our hand. Another man from, from coming through, who is influenced by Shaytaan, the first action. And the second thing Allah has allowed us. To spit three times on our left, a dry spit, because this shows us the importance of fighting Shaytaan. This shows us the importance of knowing Shaytaan. And fighting Shaytaan. I thought this was a beautiful wisdom, of how Allah has allowed us certain actions to show us how important it is in our Salaah and otherwise as well. Um, so if the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam's Qareen became Muslim, that means that our Qareen can become Muslim too, right? No? Yes? No? Yes, yes, exactly. Mashallah, Jazakallah Khair. Sister, sisters have been studying and people have been studying, Mashallah. So yes, so. Uh, it is not possible for us to make Dawah to our Qareen. We can't just say, hey, Qareen man, you know, you, you've been with me my whole life. Can't you see that I'm becoming more pious? Can't you see I'm attending Al Maghrib courses? Why can't you just be like, you know, be like us, you know, become Muslim? No, you can't do that. But in a beautiful hadith, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he did say. He said that just like a believer can wear down, uh, uh, his riding animal during traveling, a believer can ride. Ride out, I mean, sorry, can tire out his Qareen by piety and by obedience of Allah. So just like if you're traveling on a horse or a camel. And you don't give it a rest, the horse and camel will become very, very tired. Just like that, your Qareen will become tired of you. If you keep worshiping Allah, if you focus on your relationship with Allah, if you keep having obedience of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So. Uh, yes, okay. And Allah knows best. So, um. I'm sorry, so there's actually the fourth category which was covered in class, I apologize. Khinzib, this is the fourth category of shi'atin. Um, this is the hadith of Uthman, who came to the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam and he says, the shi'atin, the Shaytaan. Uh, the Shaytaan, the Shaytaan comes between me and my prayer and my reciting of the Quran when I'm praying. And he confuses me. And the Prophet tells him, he says, this is a Shaytaan who is known as Khinzib. If you sense him, if you feel him, if you feel his waswasa, his whispering. Seek refuge in Allah from him and spit to your left three times. So, again, so if he comes to you while you are praying. You can, you can, if you feel like somebody is trying, some, he's trying to distract you, the Shaytaan, you can whisper, you can turn to your left. And you can whisper, I mean, you can spit a dry spit, not that you're gonna, you know. You know, uh, you're not gonna dows this, you know, you're not gonna, anyway, so it's, it's a very, very dry spit, okay, so. Just like that, okay, so, and Allah knows best. So. And Uthman says that I followed this advice of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam when I was praying and indeed it worked. I did that, Allah dispelled him from me. So. Okay, so again, this shows us again that the guidance of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, that he allowed us these physical actions in our prayer. Because it shows us the importance of fighting Shaytaan. And Allah knows best. Okay. Okay, so, you know, there's many, many other names that have been said, uh. Uh, many, many other names of shi'atin that have been said in popular cultures and so on and so forth. But uh, as for what we discussed in class, none of those other names are authentic. And according to, as we discussed in class. That these are the names that we know from the authentic Quran and the Sunnah. These are the names that we know from the Quran and Sunnah, which we're just covered right now. And as far as ifrit is concerned, I will ask Sheikh and uh, I will see, because he didn't mention this in class, so I will see what our viewpoint will be. Uh, with regards to ifrit, for those of you who are following your notes. For those of you who are not and you're confused, don't worry about it. So. Okay, so we have soldiers from mankind, so the shi'atin from mankind. So Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says in Sutul An'am, he says. Uh, and thus we have made for every prophet an enemy, devil from mankind and jinn. So indeed, devils from mankind and jinn. Uh, so this shows us they're, they're shi'atin. They're, they're, they're jinn from the, from, they're shi'atin from the ins, from mankind and from the jinn. And. And the same conditions apply for a, for a jinn to become a follower of Shaytaan, for a jinn to become a shi'atin, a Shaytaan, and for a man. To fa, become a follower of Shaytaan, the same conditions apply, that he must follow, he must support Shaytaan. And he must call to the Dawah of Iblis. He must call to the Dawah of Iblis, he must follow and he, he must support Iblis. Uh, and does this mean that we go around and we say, okay, this person in my life, he must be a follower of Iblis because he always tells me to do this. He influences me negatively, he does this and this and that and so on and so forth. And this is obviously, no, we dare, we never do this. We do not judge other people. Like this. We always separate the sin from the human being. We say, okay, this person may have sinned, just like we sin. And, but this is just something that Shaytaan has influenced him, this is not part of who he is. Um, a scholar, Malik Ibn Dinar, he said something very, uh, very interesting. He said. That certainly, a human Shaytaan is more difficult for me to deal with than a jinn Shaytaan. Because when I seek refuge with Allah from a jinn Shaytaan, he runs away from me while the human Shaytaan. Personally tries to drag me towards a shin. So for us human beings, he's trying to say, if we say. We, 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 we feel a whisper from Shaytaan, we say, a'udzubillahi minash Shaytaanin Rajim, and this will work. The jinn Shaytaan will go away. But if we have a human Shaytaan with us who is still trying to influence us, he's just gonna say, you know, what are you talking about? He's not gonna go away. He's gonna be there. The a'udzubillahi minash Shaytaanin Rajim, the a'udzubillahi minnq will not work, you know. So this is why a human Shaytaan. Is diff, is more difficult to deal with than a jinn Shaytaan. Again, we do not judge other people like this, okay, but, uh, but. Yeah, so basically, uh, so this is why, uh, but again, the purpose of this is for us to evaluate the people around us. And to prioritize our relationships and think, uh, that, um, we have to think about the influences in our life that are negative. And we must think that we want to try to strive to be as close to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, in his obedience as much as possible. Okay, so. Uh, yes, so and also that we should not fear, uh, any of the shi'atin from the jinn and from mankind as well. Because the protection of Allah is always there for those that seek it, Insha Allah, us. Um, so, uh, okay. Alright, perfect. Okay, so the allies of Shaytaan versus the allies, allies of Allah. So these, for me, these ayat are, are very beautiful. Uh, they're, they're very beautiful because they, they create a parallel between the two parties. And they show us that for us striving to achieve Taqwa and obedience of Allah, Insha Allah, may Allah make us of these people, there's so many benefits. There's so much. There's so much closeness to Allah and it, it is absolutely amazing. So I hope that we can really reflect upon these last ayats because we have three minute, I mean, four pages left. Insha Allah, so we will, Insha Allah, we can actually focus on these ayats, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala. So Allah divides people into the allies and protectors of Shaytaan. And the allies and protectors of Allah himself. So, so Allah says, oh, children of Adam. Let not Shaytaan tempt you as he removed your parents from paradise, taking away from them their clothing, showing them their private parts. And then he says, Allah says, indeed he sees you, he and his tribe from where you do not see them. Indeed, we have made the devils. Uh, allies to those who do not believe. This is the ayah that we have covered for the third time today. And it is in Sutul Araf. So, uh, this can refer to again, the shi'atin from mankind and the shi'atin from the jinn. So. So yes, and Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, uh, let's see here, Allah says. So Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, he says, indeed, do, indeed do the devils inspire their allies amongst men to dispute with you? And if you were to obey them, indeed you would be associators of others with Allah, with him. So Allah again refers to the Aulia of. Of his, of his own and then the allies of Shaytaan again over here. So then what about the people that are the Aulia of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala? That, uh, that are with Allah, um, what does Allah says about them? Allah say, Allah says. Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, um. For the allies of Allah, indeed for the allies of Allah, there will be no fear concerning them, nor will they ever grieve. Those who have believed and they were fearing Allah, for them are glad tidings in this life and in the hereafter. No change is there in the words of Allah. That is what is a great achievement. Okay, and then Allah says, um, for those people who are the allies of, uh, Allah and those who believe, Allah says. Um, Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala will take these people from the darkness into the light. And Allah will take these people, these believers who believe in Allah, who worship Allah, um, into, from the darkness into the light. And for those of you who, uh, for those, for those who disbelieve, they are the allies of Taghout. Um, and Allah will, uh, take them out of the light into the darkness. Those are the companions of the fire and they will abide therein eternally. So Allah, in, in our, in our Deen, there's much parable, parable and analogy of light that's been given for those people that believe. Everywhere from the light, uh, that will come from the Wudu that we make, that will make us shine on the Day of Judgment, that will allow the Prophet SAW to recognize us as Muslims, as His Ummah, to, uh, for example, as we mentioned in class, the gray hair that any, any person, any Muslim would have, which will become a light for you on the Day of Judgment, to the light of the believers on the Day of Judgment, that will allow them to cross through the Siraat, to, to many, many things. Light, the parable of light has been given often in the Sunnah and in the Quran and this is for those people who believe, those people who, who are the Aulia of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And then the parable of darkness has been given to the hypocrites, to the people who disbelieve, to the allies of Shaytaan. So yes, and this is, this is, this is what we strive to do, we always seek, strive, strive to seek the help of Allah and Allah will, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, He will protect us at all times. May Allah always do this for us, Ameen. May Allah always protect us, Ameen. So in the Battle of Badr, for example, as we mentioned in class, that, um, uh, that this, as we know, that there were only 313 Muslims against a thousand or more non-Muslims and these were the only Muslims at the time that were alive. And this was the first battle of the Prophet SAW that he participated in. And at this time, as we know, that the Prophet SAW, he stayed up all night seeking the help of Allah, making Dua to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and asking Allah to protect these Muslims because as His Dua said, that, oh Allah, if these, if these Muslims perish, then there will be no one left on this earth to worship you. So, uh, so yeah, so the Prophet SAW, he made Dua and then Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, he sent down the angels uh, in, in the Battle of the Badr, in the Battle of Badr. And because of this, Allah gave victory to the believers, uh, at the Battle of Badr through the angels, through the, through the Muslims seeking the help of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, through the Ibadah of the Muslims towards Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And may Allah make us of those people, Ameen. And Allah will indeed, this, this lesson is here to tell us and to encourage us that indeed when we turn to Allah in our obedience, in our Taqwa, in our worship of Allah, in our seeking of knowledge to get close to Allah, indeed, indeed Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, He will, He will come to our aid and He will, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, He will protect us. What about the allies of Shaytaan? Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, says, indeed there is for Him no authority over those who have believed and relied upon their Lord. His authority is only over those who take Him as an ally. Shaytaan's authority is over, only over those who take Shaytaan as an ally and those who through Him associate others with Allah. And Allah says, whoever takes Shaytaan as an ally instead of Allah has certainly sustained a clear loss. These are the Ayat in Sut Nahal and Sut An Nisa. Okay, so. And, uh, the Hadith of Abu Hurairah, which, uh, which wasn't mentioned in class, uh, but I'll just say, anyway, it's in the notes. Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, says, I mean, sorry, the Prophet SAW says, that Allah says, Hadith Qudsi, that I will declare war against the one who shows hostility to a pious slave of mine and the most beloved matter by which my slave comes near to me is that which I have imposed upon them, the Wajibat, the Fard. And my slave keeps coming nearer to me through performing the Nawafil, the Sunnah deeds until I love them. So I become their sense of hearing with which they hear and their sense of sight with which they see and their hand with which they grip, their legs with which they walk. And if they ask me, I will give them and if they ask for my protection, I will protect them. I do not hesitate to do anything as I hesitate to take the soul of the believer for they hate death and I hate to disappoint them. Allahu Akbar, Subhanallah. This is a beautiful Hadith. Again, so for the Shia'een from the man, from the, from the Inns, from the Shaytaan himself, Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Himself says that for those of them who declare war on us, Insha Allah, the believers, Allah says that I will declare war, war on them. And whom's, and whoever Allah declares war on, who can guide them, who can help them at all? And Allah says that for us Muslims, Insha Allah, when we pray, when we fast, when we do our, when we do our Fard, our, our, um, our required deeds first, when we do the things that are obligatory upon us first and foremost and then we strive to get close to Allah through our Sunnah deeds, to our Nawafil deeds, to, to the deeds which are optional. Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, will love us. And when Allah, Allah loves us, then He guides us so much so that our sense of hearing with which we hear, our sights with which we see, our hands with which we grip and the legs with which we walk, they are guided by Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, and Him alone. And it becomes so much so that if us, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, may, may Allah make us of those people, if we ask Allah for anything, Allah will give it. And if we ask for protection from Shaytaan, from the Shia'een, then Allah will protect us. And Allah will not hesitate, uh, to give us anything that we ever want to as long as we strive to worship Him in full obedience to Him. And as long as, and Allah guarantees that He will, He hates to disappoint us. He hates, I hate to disappoint them, the Prophet SAW said, um, about the Muslims. So the scholars, they discuss again that they are allies of Allah and they are allies of Shaytaan and we seek the allegiance of Allah in everything that we do and we want to make Allah, Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, our ally and we want to dissociate with Iblis. And this begins, of course, with, uh, with being at these study sessions, with taking the exam. It begins first and foremost with keeping in mind the Istigahah, which is one of the most powerful things uh, that we discussed, we can take out of this, meaning if we ever feel a whispering, if we ever feel anything that inclines us towards evil, we say, this is something that is such a powerful tool for us. And as the Hadith of Uthman said, when he did this in his Salaah, then he found that Allah did help him. And as this Hadith says, that Allah will indeed help us. And, um, it begins with this and it ends with the pleasure of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. It ends with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Himself saying that indeed He will protect us and He will wage war on those people, on those of the Shia'een, on Iblis Himself, who has shown hostility against us, the Muslims. And, um, so yeah, so and then Allah, and then, uh, let's see here. So yeah, so, so with that, uh, we have concluded our study session. Uh, this was more so meant to be a regurgitation more than anything of the notes. But if anybody has any questions, um, online or otherwise, then go ahead. Okay. Alhamdulillah, so we finished on time, I always like to be on time, so, so remember that for those of us who took the class, we have the Husna honor roll. So for everybody who gets a ninety plus, Insha Allah, we must strive to be that way and I, I know that Insha Allah, you guys are here, which means we are striving for sincerity with the knowledge. Uh, Insha Allah, we should always, we should try to get to the Husna honor roll, we should try to get a ninety plus, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala. More so because we want to seek the pleasure of Allah, want to be more serious with this knowledge. But secondary also is that Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, we will see you as more serious students of knowledge. Almaghr will, Almaghr HQ will, we will start to get more courses, more Shiyukh and we'll continue to bring Islam to our beloved city of Houston, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala. We'll continue to, continue to change ourselves through this Deen and our community as well, go ahead, Insha Allah, Sister.
Were there any, um, descriptions given about the exam itself? Like, do we know how many questions, multiple choice?
No.
Or even from people who have taken the exam?
Usually multiple choice are fifty questions. The exam is about fifty questions, right?
Yeah, but Fik, yeah, Fik of Chilling was, I believe it was, no, Fik of Chilling was forty or thirty questions. It's, it's not always fifty, yeah. Cause I, I got a ninety, so I got four wrong, which means I got thirty-six out of forty. So it was out of forty, actually. Yeah, for sure, Fik of, I took it twice. Yeah, so it's, it's usually not said, but Sheikh Saad said that make sure that you read the question first and foremost. And secondly, it shouldn't be too hard, Insha Allah, because Fik of Chilling wasn't too hard, so, Insha Allah, this exam should not be too hard as well. For anyone listening online and for you as well, don't let Shaytaan deter you from taking the exam. You know Sheikh Saad has said himself that this exam will be easy and Insha Allah, for me at least, personal reflection here, that when I take the exam, I end up learning more. Cause I get frustrated when I get a question wrong and then I end up going through the notes and so on, I said, why did I get this wrong? But it's, Insha Allah, this will help you, um, get more of the knowledge. Any other questions at all? Is there any way to do it online or?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing the lessons online.
And no questions? Okay, so with that, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, we will conclude again. Jazakallah Khair and everybody. And, um, for the, for the Ifrit, uh, category, Insha Allah, we will get back to you at one of our study sessions. Go ahead, Sister.
Uh, we have two more review sessions, right?
There's one more and then Insha Allah, Insha Allah, uh, that's the plan. Insha Allah, for the Day of the Exam, we're gonna have like a crash course.
On the next review, we're gonna cover five tips.
That's the hope, Insha Allah.
Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala. Insha Allah, so the, what Muhammad mentioned, we'll have a crash course, uh, social as well, where sisters can be sisters, brothers can be brothers, you'll get to know the volunteers. And, uh, we'll do a, a crash course review session, we'll have a social, we might have food. And Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala, you can bring your laptops and we'll, if you want to, you can take the exam right there with us or if you want to go home and study more, you can do that as well, Insha Allah, Wa Ta'ala. Okay, so with that, we will conclude. I just click stop, right?